All right. Good evening, everybody. Good evening. Welcome. Glad we're all socializing. I'd like to call the Anacortes City Council meeting of 21 October 2024 to order. Mr. Franciac, you take the roll, please.
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath. Ms. Moulton. Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Ms. Hubig. Thank you.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Young.
I move that we excuse Ms. Cleland, I mean, Ms. Moulton, and I would assume Ms. Hubig as well. They were out of town.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. McDougall to exclude, was that Ms. Hubig and Ms. Moulton? Oh, and Cleland McGrath. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. First item is announcements and committee reports. I have a number of announcements as usual, but I want to unfortunately start with a sad one, and I have some notes written down because I don't think I could make through without the notes. So I'm deeply saddened to acknowledge the tragic loss of two brave aviators from our community who perished in a training mishap last week. This tragedy hits close to home in many ways. I've flown that very training route many times, and the reality of their loss resonates profoundly with me. Just weeks ago, we welcome home the zappers of VAQ 130 from an unprecedented nine-month combat deployment, making this loss even more heart-wrenching. I had the privilege of meeting Serena, the pilot, last August at Taylor. Her husband flew with my son at Woodby Base PA Squadron, and it was clear how committed she was to her service. Lindsay, the Wizzo, has been part of our Anacortes community for several years, and we were privileged to have her here. Both these extraordinary women exemplify the best of America's sons and daughters, making the ultimate sacrifice in service for something greater than themselves. Their loss is a tragedy not only for their families and friends, but also for all of us who hold dear the values they stood for. My thoughts and prayers with their loved ones and all of Team Woodby during this incredibly difficult time. Other updates: Comprehensive Plan Open House, October 23, 2024, 6 to 8 p.m. right here in City Hall. Learn about the 2025 Comprehensive Plan and share your feedback on the future of Anacortes. Kids and families are welcome. Kids-centered information and activities will be available, although John has confirmed there will not be jugglers there, but I'm sure there will be other fun activities for the kids. And again, please come, and it's our second Comprehensive Plan Open House. Rotary Review Point at Cap Santa, groundbreaking Wednesday, October 23, 2024. Also, a busy day, 3 p.m. at the Summit Parking Area. Those attending, please are encouraged to carpool and use the lower Summit Parking Lot. Haunted Forest this Saturday, October 26, 2024, 6 to 8 p.m., Washington Park Campground. This is a very popular and well-attended event. This walk is recommended for older children and adults. It can get pretty scary. Please bring a flashlight or headlamp. Costumes are encouraged. Tickets are still available. And then finally, there's a community survey that should be posted by tomorrow. It's not up today, but it should be posted tomorrow. The Center for Economic and Business Research at Western Washington University is conducting a survey for the city of Anacortes related to the two citizen experience in our community. The results of the survey will be used in the planning of the 2025 Comprehensive Plan. The survey will again be linked on our website this week. So that's all of the announcements that I have, and we are going to, actually, I'll see if the Public Works Committee did not meet earlier, and I'll see if there are any other announcements or committee reports that I may have missed from council before I hit our other.
Mr. Fantini. Just a quick one. I know that we covered, or our planning committee received a report for the housing for adults with disabilities. And I just wanted to point out that there's a program through the theater that is going to be giving a performance, Adults with Disabilities, on Sunday. It's going to be the Halloween performance. So if anybody out there doesn't have any plans, Sunday afternoon at 2 o'clock at Buxton's.
All right. Thank you. All right. This next announcement is one that we've been waiting for since I know I sent off a letter back in June. This is the Downtown Alliance Washington State Main Street Community Status Award. And I was told to keep this secret for a long time, but apparently there's no secret at all left. So you're here to announce the big secret. You're here to announce the big secret that I've been the only one who's kept the secret. Well, you're on. Thank you, Jordan, and welcome. And please go ahead and introduce your name and, you know, the drill. And make sure the mic's on. Blue button.
The button.
There we go.
Jeez. No one needs to mic me.
You're on. Thank you.
Thank you for keeping the secret. Hello, I'm Jordan Hay. I'm the Executive Director of the Downtown Anacortes Alliance, and I live right here in Anacortes. I'd like to announce the Downtown Anacortes Alliance has been recognized as a Main Street community by the Washington State Main Street Program. We've been working towards the status for two years. You'll know us from things like the community garden in front of the post office, Boys in the Boat Event, Whale of a Sail, our social media campaign for Downtown Anacortes, and a ton more. And I'd like to thank the people in this room who've helped us get here and the people who aren't in this room. We're a strong organization because of our hard-working volunteers, our partners in the business and nonprofit community, support from the port, and the city council, mayor, and staff. So the whole community has really embraced us, and we appreciate it. I'd like to thank our current and our past board members for shaping the vision of the organization and for being a working, and I do mean working, board. Each of them brings unique skills and perspectives, and each has their sleeves rolled up to lead different work. A whole bunch of our board members are here today. Would you guys stand up? Yay! Thank you. And I'd like to thank our over 100 volunteers that have volunteered with us over the past two years. They've shoveled dirt, hung signs, designed pocket parks, researched history, sang naughty sea shanties, shared their knowledge, yeah, for real. That was a volunteer activity. Shared their knowledge of construction, surveyed historic buildings, designed posters and websites, stuffed gift bags, shared downtown success stories, and dressed up as whales and elves. A lot of our community members and volunteers are here tonight. Would you guys stand up? And supporters. I'd like to thank our local businesses and nonprofit organizations that have brought their creativity and their resources to our work downtown. Over 80 businesses and organizations have supported us by participating in one of our events, partnering with us on work, or donating to our organization. Shop owners have donned elf cats, come up with puns, and planned special shopping experiences. Restaurant tours have made room for our meetings and events in their beautiful spaces. And nonprofit and government departments have filled downtown with art and science and passion. And finally, I'd like to thank our partners at the city and the port. Financial support from both the city and the port was instrumental to show our readiness to be acknowledged as a Main Street community. In addition, the mayor and every single member of city council has been supportive of our organization. Your enthusiasm keeps us motivated and moving forward. City staff has been incredibly helpful, and we've been proud to collaborate with parks, the museum, the library, Public Works, and city planning over the last year. Can I get a round of applause from all of the Downtown Anacortes Alliance folks for the city? Now that we're a Main Street community, local partners can direct their BNO and POT taxes straight back into our community by participating in the Washington State Main Street Tax Credit Incentive Program. Over 30 communities across the state of Washington, including ones you've probably visited and admired, like Port Townsend, Langley, and Walla Walla, are using funds generated by this tax incentive program to make their downtowns beautiful, vital, thriving districts. All of us here believe that building a successful downtown at the heart of our community is a wonderful investment of our time, our talent, and our treasure. We are honored to have the support of our volunteers, our businesses, our nonprofits, and our municipal governments.
Thank you very much for that presentation, and the city is honored to continue working with the Downtown Alliance and partnering with you all and just the great work that you all have done and appreciate, as always. We can't do any of this without the support of the volunteers that make things happen. So thank you so much for that. So I will just warn you all that have come here. The next item on the agenda is the mayor's budget message, and it is tradition that the mayor reads this budget message. And I did not want to break with the years of tradition, and I will be reading the budget message. Council has been delivered a copy of that message. It's about 20 minutes long. Honorable City Council and members of our community, in accordance with RCW 35A 33050, I am pleased to present the city's 2025 Proposed Annual Budget. This $114 million budget reflects diligent preparation of department and program managers' estimates of revenue and expenditure reflecting community priorities and values serving our 18,270 residents. This budget includes operating expenses, $78 million allocated for essential services such as police, fire, parks, and the library; capital expenses, $36 million designated for infrastructure improvements, including streets, buildings, and utilities, both in our Utilities Enterprise Funds and General Fund. This budget builds on our commitment to sound financial planning focusing on optimizing resources and maximizing efficiencies. Prime example is the Anacortes Access Fiber Project, in which the city has invested $22 million to provide our community with affordable, reliable, and high-speed internet services for both businesses and residents. Funding for this project comes from a combination of grants and general fund cash flow with plans to cover the remaining costs through a $12 million general obligation fund. This initiative reflects our dedication to enhancing connectivity and supporting economic growth in our community. We will continue to face budget pressures, particularly from our largest expense, personnel costs. Additionally, we have $3.5 million in interfund loans related to the purchase of the Anacortes Fire Department's ladder truck and Fire Station 3. While we anticipate FEMA alternative funding reimbursement for our November 2021 declared disaster to cover these expenses, we will need to service the interfund loans through 2025 until that reimbursement is received. Highlights to our operating budget for 2025 include $6.5 million in resources to address south commercial improvements, including replacing asphalt, the creation of bike lanes, safety improvements, and eliminating barriers to mobility across the corridor; $1.9 million in increased wages and benefits; $530,000 to address breakwater repairs and the removal of creosite pilings in the DNR leased waters; $500,000 in professional services to meet legislative planning requirements related to the 2025 Comprehensive Plan; $135,000 in increased costs to address state-mandated standards for delivery of public defense services. This budget, as presented, maintains a healthy 17% general fund reserve even amidst three years of flat or declining sales tax revenues. I want to express my gratitude to our staff for submitting a reasonable budget request and for their understanding of our fiscal realities. I also commend the city council for its strong commitment to retaining staff and completing the paving of Commercial Avenue. So in the areas of public safety, the Anacortes Police Department is proud of its crime reduction, proactive policing, and high case clearance rates. The department is focused on recruiting and retaining top candidates for open officer positions. Recent hiring efforts have boosted staffing, enhancing proactive patrols and law enforcement presence in city parks and forests. In 2025, the new regional training campus in Arlington will enable newly hired officers to complete their training locally. Drug crimes are connected to nearly all other crime classifications, and patrol officers in Anacortes are actively addressing enforcement, leading to a 10% reduction in the overall crime rate following changes in Washington State drug laws. This increased enforcement has also resulted in more vehicles being towed, pending search warrants, and a rise in jail care and custody expenses due to more suspects being booked. The city remits 3/10 of 1% of sales tax from Public Safety Sales Tax Initiative approved by voters in 2013, which funds the Skagit Community Justice Center. This appears as both revenue and expenditure in the city budget, but is a pass-through account to Skagit County. The city has a jail inmate work release program through the Anacortes Municipal Court, which allows booking fees to be waived for city-reducing jail costs. This budget also defers the purchase of two police patrol vehicles, saving $130,000 in 2025 general fund expenditures and aligns with anticipated recruitment schedules. T-Bone, the APD's narcotic-detection dog, has supported drug enforcement efforts since 2016. Veterinary experts recommend a retirement plan for T-Bone in early 2025. Based on his incredible success for APD and many other law enforcement agencies in the region, a succession plan for T-Bone is underway. We anticipate a new canine will join APD in mid-2025 as a dual-purpose asset with drug and tracking capabilities. The APD's partnership with the Anacortes Family Center and the Fire Department's Community Paramedic Program has successfully transitioned many individuals from homelessness to stable housing. Residents and visitors recognize the city of Anacortes for effectively addressing these issues, and funding for those efforts will continue in 2025. In 2025, the Anacortes Fire Department will focus on refining our updated response model. We now have two fully-staffed units at Station 1 following the hiring of eight firefighters and the deployment of a new ladder truck. The proposed 2025 operating budget allows us to continue to offer high level of service our community expects. The proposed 2025 capital budget supports station upgrades to enhance department capabilities and response times, funded by the county EMS levy and fire impact fees. Fire station upgrades. Station 1 needs additional kitchen and shower space for the second-staffed unit. Fiber-based alerting technology will replace radio systems at all three stations for improved reliability and faster 911 call notifications. Medic unit replacement. The reserve medic unit is frequently in use and beyond its service life, requiring replacement. Command unit addition. Increased call volumes and the addition of a fourth unit necessitate a command vehicle for on-duty supervisors, enhancing supervision and response flexibility. Under city administration, the city attorney's office provides in-house counsel to the city leaders and staff, ensuring the city meets the highest legal standards. The city attorney's office also oversees all city procurement, contracts, and grants, public records management and responses, claims management, and prosecution services. The 2025 budget includes funding for an assistant city attorney position to be filled when caseload requires full-time in-house support. Until then, the contract city prosecutor will continue serving the city and the Anacortes Police Department. The budget also provides additional funding to centralized grants management, with the contract specialist position reclassified to contracts and grants manager for centralized oversight and a single-pointed contract of contact for staff and council. The Human Resources Department is essential to city operations, focusing on attracting, developing, and retaining skilled and dedicated workforce. The HR Department completed a successful rollout of NeoGov recruitment platform in early of quarter four of 2024. NeoGov allows us to attract and manage candidates more efficiently and enhances our recruitment process. As we navigate a challenging recruitment landscape, particularly for public safety positions, NeoGov will be instrumental in our efforts to fill critical vacancies. As we plan for 2025, the city is committed to evaluating all expenditures related to increased wages and benefits. This diligent assessment balances our need to recruit and retain skilled workers by providing fair and attractive compensation, as well as our need to remain fiscally responsible. The city will only be requesting one additional FTE, a public defender. This position is necessary in order to meet state-mandated caseload standards. We anticipate negotiations with the Anacortes Police Service Guild will continue late into quarter four of 2024, and in 2025, the HR Department will negotiate successor contracts with both the International Association of Firefighters, Local 1537, and the Teamsters Local 231 Unions. The Municipal Court is responsible for processing infractions and citations in violation of city ordinances and state statutes issued by the APD. This includes processing infractions such as knowingly possessing counterfeit and controlled substances. The city employs a court administrator, two court clerks, and contracts with Skagit County District Court for judicial services. The Municipal Court has a duty to set cases for arraignments, hearings, probation revocations, and trial. In 2024, the city entered into interlocal agreement with the Skagit County Office of Assigned Counsel to complete defendant screenings to ensure appropriate assignment to a public defender. The city currently employs a full-time public defender and legal assistant to meet state standards. The proposed budget includes hiring an additional public defender in 2025 when caseload limitations take effect, along with funding for contract attorneys to handle overflow and conflict cases. The Washington Office of Public Defense awarded the city a total of $75,000 in grant funds to offset the increase in indigent defense expenses. This budget supports the city's commitment to providing legal counsel to indigent residents as required by the Sixth and Fourteenth Amendments. I remain concerned that caseload reductions could force funding cuts to diversion programs like Community Court, leading to fewer resources to prevent people from entering the justice system and ultimately hindering law enforcement. The Information Systems and Technology Division supports computing network requirements, playing a vital role in keeping city business moving forward. The work of the division is crucial to every department's success and essential to ensure stability and security of city networks. The division is funded through departments' interfund charges. Each department's funding allocation is based on the number of nodes utilized. Interfund charges support the department's operating costs and equipment replacement costs. In 2025, a significant amount of time will be spent implementing a new Enterprise Resource Program software system to automate and manage core business processes. Focus remains on enhancing the city's security and protecting critical data. In 2025, we will add two additional layers of network security. The budget also includes funding for security audit to evaluate our cybersecurity posture and identify security gaps and vulnerabilities. Since the beginning of construction in 2019, the city's fiber optic project now passes 75% of city's businesses and residents, has over 2,550 business and residential customers in service, with another 1,360 orders in queue, and is generating over $2 million annually. Fiber internet construction continues in 2025 with the remaining core areas under construction. To date, the primary funding source for the city's entire fiber project has been the city's general fund, a $2.25 million grant from the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration, $2.5 million grants from Skagit County, and a $6.9 million interfund loan. This has allowed the city to continue to construct the network, add customers, pay interest internally to the funds we borrow from. In December of 2024, the council will be asked to approve a $12 million limited-tax general obligation fund. The bond proceeds will be utilized to repay the general fund and the interfund loans and to meet the remaining construction costs of the project. While a number of government-led fiber projects have not been successful, in Anacortes, over $22 million of fiber network has been constructed, and the city will only be obligated for $12 million with the very real prospect of generating revenue in excess of debt service. A citywide mass notification system implementation is underway and will be operational in 2025. Community members will be able to opt into emergency notifications, as well as fiber outages, and receive information via email, text, or voicemail in 60 different languages. The Planning, Community, and Economic Development Department is tasked with supporting the community's vision for our future as outlined in the Anacortes Comprehensive Plan. The values defining our work include sustainability, preservation, economic vitality, and providing a supported and connected community. PCED is updating the Comprehensive Plan under the Growth Management Act, continuing and continuing through. This update will include revised 20-year projections for population and job growth through 2045, anticipating 4,988 new residents and 3,145 new jobs in Anacortes. The Comprehensive Plan and zoning map will be updated to address this growth and its impacts. The city will also update its Critical Area Ordinance as part of the 2025 periodic update, supported by a $125,000 grant from the Department of Commerce. This funding will cover required updates, studies, and staff time. State law mandates jurisdictions incorporate climate change planning into their comprehensive plans. The city is developing a new climate change and resiliency element with input from a newly-formed climate team of stakeholders. The city received a $500,000 planning grant from the Department of Commerce to offset costs for amending the Comprehensive Plan policies and developmental regulations. The grant will fund required updates, studies, and staff time for the project. Alongside the 2025 periodic update, PCED is focused on city's affordable housing goals. We are holding public meetings to gather community feedback on the implementation of recommendations from the 2023 Housing Action Plan. This plan will guide major updates to the housing element of the Comprehensive Plan. Housing remains a pressing concern, and the city is exploring options to encourage more housing construction. One possibility is partnering with private developers to build a high-density affordable housing on city-owned land at Sharp's Corner. A feasibility study and sub-area plan are currently underway to assess what can be accommodated on that site. To support the goal of providing a supported and connected community, the PCED budget continues to include $60,000 for community action to provide social services at a satellite office in Anacortes. To promote economic vitality, the city and Port of Anacortes are developing an interlocal agreement for an event center near Cap Santa Marina. This facility will host activities to attract visitors, boosting the local economy and the city's lodging tax fund. Funding will come from the lodging tax fund, not the general fund. While this will reduce annual allocations for other organizations, long-term benefits of this event center are expected to generate more LTAC revenue in the future. The Economic Development Committee is collaborating with a consultant to develop an economic strategic plan aimed at strengthening local businesses and enhancing community quality of life. This plan will inform updates to the economic development element of the Comprehensive Plan. A request for $30,000 is included in the 2025 budget for a follow-up study. Additionally, PCED, in partnership with Public Works, is seeking grants for electric vehicle charging stations at the Depot Arts Center and the movie theater parking lot. As part of our support for the maritime industry, the failing breakwater Fidalgo Bay Marina will be repaired, with $280,000 allocated in the capital facilities plan. The city will also remove 33 creosote pilings along three piers within the DNR leased area, a $250,000 project needed for compliance and environmental stewardship. Grant funding may be available for these projects, but none has yet been secured. PCED staff continue to work with property owners along Guimas Channel to acquire easements for a planned trail. Stabbert Maritime, formerly Loverx Marina, has agreed to dedicate a trail easement as part of their development, which will significantly aid in the trail expansion. In late 2023, PCED launched SmartGov, an online permitting portal. While the rollout has faced challenges, a $197,000 grant will help improve the platform, streamline workflows, and digitize documents. Collaborating with the developer community, we aim for a more efficient and transparent permit process in 2025. Public Works manages essential services including streets, water supply, sewage treatment, city facilities, fleet services, storm water management, solid waste, and recycling, providing 24/7 access to many of these services. In 2024, the Water Department expanded its service area to South Fidalgo Island. I am pleased to report that our street's pavement condition index continues to improve due to our ongoing investment in pavement management. In 2025, we will focus grant and transportation benefit district resources on Commercial Avenue, also known as State Route 20, from 11th to 34th Street, which includes replacing asphalt, adding bike lanes, updating the signal at 12th Street, implementing safety improvements, and removing mobility barriers. Achieving this ambitious goal depends on securing grant funding. In 2025, we will finalize master plans for streets and city utilities, enhancing our ability to predict investment needs and manage existing infrastructure. This will improve community and council's visibility of system conditions and assist in planning for future needs. The wastewater treatment plant, outfall replacement, and pump station will be completed in 2025, enhancing sewer capacity and improving wastewater treatment before it enters the Guimas Channel. We continue to evaluate the potential financial impacts of the nutrient permit reduction as we assess these new permit requirements. The Public Works budget includes funding for storm water drainage mitigation on Fidalgo Bay Road and the outfall near Seafarers Park. Prioritizing facility needs and completing the facility condition assessment, investing in water utility pipe replacement. the facility condition assessment, investing in water utility pipe replacements for regional customers. A wholesale rate study is underway to support the rate structure for 2025 to 2027 for our wholesale water customers. Our quality-of-life areas, the Parks and Recreation Department manages our parks, communities, forestlands, recreation programs, Senior Activity Center, and Grandview Cemetery. We are proudly a city within a park, with nearly 40% of our city limits being parks and forestlands. The 2025 budget includes existing maintenance funding and emphasizes the importance of our park spaces for city residents. Planned construction includes a new restroom and parking lot at the Ben Ruth Skate Park, building a new plaza adjacent to the W.T. Preston, permitting and conceptual design at Hart Lake and Ship Harbor, and completion of the Tommy Thompson Trestle Feasibility Study. In 2024, our recreation staff provided over 85 opportunities for community recreation. In 2024, our recreation staff provided over 85 opportunities for community recreation. In 2025, we expect to exceed that amount as we are back to full staffing. Enrichment for all ages is a fundamental part of the parks and recreation responsibilities. Nearly 160 participants visit the Anacortes Senior Activity Center daily for innovative classes, events, socialization, resources, and congregate meals. This is a 14% increase from 2023, and we anticipate increased participation in the coming year. To support additional center utilization, a remodel to make better use of our floor space, create a more welcoming environment for participants, and create additional space for programming is budgeted. In 2025, Burke Consulting will assist with a community needs assessment to inform our program and capital improvement plans for the next 10 years. Museum staff operates three public facilities in our historic downtown: the Anacortes Museum and its research library, the Maritime Heritage Center, and the national historic landmark W.T. Preston. Visitation numbers have increased nearly 7% during the first three quarters of 2024, and we expect continued growth in visitation and programming in 2025, when a new exhibit on the history of music on Fidalgo and Guimas will open. Museum outreach extends to stewardship of the Bill Mitchell Murals, creation of interpreted signage at significant locations, and digital platforms linked to the museum website to more than 90,000 archived photographs, historic films, oral history recordings, and online access to 110 years of local newspapers. The Anacortes Museum offers dedicated service to residents and visitors while collaborating with the community organizations to honor our history. As donations to the museum collections increase, additional storage and curatorial space is needed. The budget includes $75,000 from the Museum Foundation, $50,000 from reserves, and $75,000 to be raised through fundraising for this facility. Additionally, the museum partners with the Anacortes Museum Foundation to enhance exhibits, events, publications, and programs through fundraising efforts. The Anacortes Public Library appreciates that our residents are enthusiastic readers with high expectations for library services in both physical and digital formats. The library benefits from strong support from the Library Foundation and Friends of the Library, which enhance the budget. The Friends Shop helps extend resources, ensuring a diverse collection. To address rising costs of electronic resources, a slight budget increase will support popular services like Libby, while the Library Foundation covers most of the expenses for Hoopla, Value Line, Mango, and other various online databases. The library collaborates with local partners, including the Anacortes Family Center and the Anacortes School District, to better meet community needs. The city appreciates the financial support from our citizens and are committed to promoting reading for all ages, lifelong learning, inclusive programming, and serving as a welcoming community hub. In conclusion, this balanced budget is presented reflects my responsibility to continuously evaluate the city's revenue and expenditures, maintain a strong financial position within the parameters of our fiscal policies and state law, all while providing quality, professional, and efficient municipal services. I look forward to our continued discussion and collaboration on the budget with both the city council and the public before adoption in December. We have three city council work sessions planned, and feedback from our constituents will be considered throughout the close of the public hearing in November. Looking ahead, we remain committed to delivering high-quality services and a balanced budget to our community. We will continue to focus on retaining high-quality staff, enhancing public safety, improving infrastructure, ensuring fiscal accountability, and enhancing the quality of life and the pursuit of happiness for all. Best regards, Matt Miller, Mayor. So, thank you, everyone, for hanging around for that, and that's the start of the budget process, and look forward to that going. So, I'll take a deep breath and move on to item four, which is public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public that wishes to address the council anything that is not on our agenda tonight. Okay, and, oops, I lost my, all that reading, I got distracted and lost my online connection. Thank my public school teachers for teaching me to read. Okay, I don't see any participants online with hands raised. Okay, we are moving on to item five, which is our consent agenda, items five A through E. Council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. A move, we approve the consent agenda, items A, B, C, D, and E.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. McDowell, to approve consent agenda items A through E. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Now, we're on to item number six, other business. Item 6A, it's a contract award, 2025, City of Anacortes Prosecutor Services. This is a discussion item with possible action, and Ms. Swetnam is already there, ready to kick this item off. When you're ready, Ms. Swetnam.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, and members of council and members of the audience who are still here. So, tonight, I have the privilege of presenting the contract for prosecution services for calendar year 2025, and I'm joined in the front row here by Julie Walters, who's the city prosecutor and has been in that role for a number of years. So, thanks to Julie for being here. So, the agreement is in your packet, I'm just gonna go through some of the terms briefly. So, as a reminder, and I think you all don't see a lot of the prosecution that happens because it happens in a different building, and Julie does a good job of managing that for the city. So, the services provided by the city prosecutor are that she represents the city in matters including persons charged with misdemeanors, contested civil infractions, and dangerous dog cases. She also provides legal support to the Anacortes Police Department and supports cases that are in community court. So, for the 2025 contract, to allow continuity of services, the term of this agreement is for 12 months. Julie Walters is, as I mentioned, a contract prosecutor, but there is a provision in the agreement that allows for substitution of Craig Kamik or other attorneys if necessary if there are conflicts or she's unavailable. So, the contract cost, the structure of this agreement has two components. There is a flat monthly rate for prosecution services, and that's $8,700 per month. And then, in addition to that, there's an hourly rate to provide support to the Anacortes Police Department and provide support for cases in community court, and those are done at an hourly rate. Ms. Walters' hourly rate's $2.75, and there's also the opportunity for some paralegal support on that. So, the total cost for the contract is $119,400 for the year, and I have to say that this has been the structure that we've used for some time, and, you know, stayed within budget, and it's worked really well in previous years. I wanted to address, you just heard the mayor's budget message, where there was a discussion of bringing the prosecution services in-house, and that was actually provided for in the 2024 budget and is going to be provided for in the 2025 budget, but it makes sense to make that transition when the caseload at Anacortes Municipal Court grows to the point where there's some cost-benefit analysis to that being a full-time staff position, which is more costly than a contract position. So, to date, and Ms. Walters and I were just talking, caseloads have not grown to the point where it makes sense to bring that position in-house. So, while it's in the budget, we'd like to move forward with the contract for calendar year 2025. I'm gonna turn it over to Julie, she's got some words, and then I'm happy to answer questions.
Good evening, everybody. I'm not used to using a microphone, so this might give me a second here. My name is Julie Walters, and I've met some of you, some of you I haven't met. I was born and raised in Anacortes, my parents were as well, my grandparents were as well. I have shared the contract up until now with Craig Kamik, so that's probably the name that some of you may be a little more familiar with. I started splitting the contract with him essentially, or providing coverage in March of 2020, right before everything really changed a lot. But I have thoroughly enjoyed doing so, and it's really my privilege and honor to do so for this community that I really love. As Ms. Swetnam indicated, the case numbers haven't increased quite the way that we had anticipated. You know, I think there was some thought that there would be an upswing after COVID, there would be an upswing after the Blake decision, which criminalized, recriminalized possession of controlled substances. However, I consulted with the Washington Administrative Office of the Courts, they keep statistics on all of these things, and Anacortes is really kind of in lockstep with 2023 when it comes to their numbers. The only increase that I noticed, and I was speaking with Ms. Swetnam about, was we have quite a bit more infractions, so law enforcement is definitely stepping up their presence in terms of issuing infractions for driving violations and things of that nature. So, I don't, and community court's another interesting thing that I think people have questions about. So, I don't have a whole lot of statistical information because their community court coordinator recently left the office, and I guess he was the one that had a lot of the stats. However, I do know, from speaking with him previously, that Anacortes averages about two or three new participants a month, so it's not a really high number. Just from this January through May of 2024, it was indicated that there were 11 participants that were added to community court. Now, I will say I was a little surprised by that, but there has been a fair amount of turnover with community court with the county in the past. However, right now, Anacortes has two probation officers assigned to the court, and they are fantastic. They connect very well with the defendants, and they're having very good success rate getting folks aligned with the services that I think would benefit them. So, I'm hopeful that we'll have an increase in those numbers based on the success that I have seen up until now. So, overall, I'm proud that Anacortes is participating in it despite some hiccups that have taken place in the past. I think that's all I really had, I don't know if you have specific questions.
Oh, well, council usually has questions, so I will turn it over to council. Council, any questions?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. No, I just really wanted to comment about how unobtrusive this whole process has been, and I use that word deliberately because it's been really relatively silent, and some community is such a big part of the discussion. And for me, that also signals efficiency, the quality of life that we have, and the continuity of those people that are in the offices and doing the great job that they are. I really appreciate that. And I also really appreciated about, you know, the mayor's budget message was that you took a look and you decided how efficient it was for the moment, that we really need it. And, you know, those are things that, as cities, and particularly small cities, or any city really, really sometimes have to take a hard look and say, hey, you know, this may not be the thing that we need now, even though we anticipate it, but should we? We're prepared for it? I think that's applaudable, I really do. And so, you know, thank you for the hard work, it's always good to see you, and, you know, every once in a while, at least for me, you may have to say, hey, I am, and then say, oh, yeah, right. If I don't see you here in the chamber, seeing you outside of contextual outside, I may say, your face is so familiar. But really, I really wanted to say thank you, and thank you to the department, of course, Ms. Swetnam and the mayor, for taking a hard look, and what it also shows is the willingness of the city as a whole to look at how we're spending money and to make sure that it's the most efficient, best thing we can do with the data that we have currently, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate council's support, not only in 2024, to give the flexibility to look at the numbers. I think we all had the discussion about we thought it might be 250 additional cases based on the bringing drug possession, controlled substances back to a gross misdemeanor, but the interesting point that you raised is some of the enforcement, because we have more officers out, so that was, but having that flexibility, we're asking in 2024 again, should we need it.
Okay, one of the things I did want to point out, when trying to kind of discern which cases are which when looking at numbers, the possession of controlled substance cases are a little trickier because they almost always accompany something else, from my experience, so they're often tied to a DUI, or they're tied to a theft, and so law enforcement is coming into contact with a specific person for a different crime, and then maybe a search leads to finding a controlled substance. So, it's a little trickier to kind of parse it out, the way that there's a specific stat for DUIs, but that's really the only specific gross misdemeanor that there's a stat for with AOC. But to Councilman Young's point, I think the efficiency, I just have to say, is the municipal court staff is fantastic, there is a wealth of knowledge within those people, I mean, they are second to none. I, there's a very good working relationship with the public defender, the current public defender, as well as the one that preceded, Rob Jones was wonderful to work with, and those relationships, as you indicated, are extremely important, and I'm grateful for them.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fandini.
Thank you very much for coming. So, I think anytime there's a really good, strong working relationship between the prosecutor and the police department, that obviously leads to some, can lead to some really good, positive outcomes. And I was just wondering, since that's kind of a highlighted section of what you do, if you could maybe point to elaborate on any successful collaborations that you've had in the past year or so with the police department.
Well, one of the things I wanted to bring up, and a little out of context, but maybe not so much now that you've asked this, is we do have a drug recognition expert who's working with the Anacortes Police Department now, he's Officer Pleadwell, he does a wonderful job, he recently went through his training, so that he is actually now an expert and can testify in court as an expert. If I'm not mistaken, he may be the only DRE in Skagit County who's not a deputy or a trooper. So, it's a pretty special thing that he's accomplished, and so we've worked together, we consult with each other over things frequently, I think that he's just a real, he's a real bonus for the Anacortes Police Department, and I've definitely seen an uptick in DUI cases because he's not afraid to stop cars and process them when he, you know, I think it's initially easier when they smell alcohol, but drugs, it's a whole different game, and so he's really kept up with all of the training and is such an asset. I also have a very good working relationship with Chief Floyd, I think that it's really important that he and I, we can talk to each other about what's going on fairly regularly, and there's just a benefit in that for both of us, I think.
And then, the other question that I would have for you is, I'm glad also that we didn't see that 250 case increase, I mean, I think when I heard that the first time, I left here kind of like, whoo, that's gonna be, how are we gonna deal with that? You mentioned a couple of things that we anticipated seeing that jump with was gonna be the end of COVID, the Blakely decision, is there anything, like, do we think that we're gonna roll pretty steady now, or is there anything else on the horizon that might lead to that uptick actually happening? I'm glad we have the option to flex up, I'm just curious if you see anything.
I, just from my own perspective as a human being, I guess, I'm concerned about the increase in drug-related things that I'm seeing, not just criminal, and I'm not just talking about criminal court, I'm talking about like in society, and it's reaching Anacortes just like it's reaching a lot of other small communities, so that is a concern, but not one that's based on statistics or anything other than just being worried. but not one that's based on statistics or anything other than just being worried about people. And there may be a slight uptick given more officers who are on the streets, and increase in traffic infractions can eventually lead to an increase in criminal things, and so, you know, a traffic infraction for someone not wearing a seatbelt, when officers become a little more experienced in being able to detect drug use, then those may become DUIs or something else, but again, that's just, that's just me thinking that those are things I could foresee, but certainly not, you know, the two-hundred-and-fifty cases that we were initially worried about, and that could change next year, I don't know if we get another public defender caseload, things might shift around, I don't know, but for right now, it just seems pretty stable. I don't know if she's knocked out there or not, but, yeah, I think that we're in good shape.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
Thank you. A few years ago, we started the, like, the Social Worker Partnership with the Family Center and in partnership with the Police Department, and I was wondering if, do we have any way to quantify if that's had an effect on the caseload, or is that harder to do? I suspect there's a certain amount of, like, prevention that maybe goes on there.
Right, I'm sure that there is, and it's one of those things where sometimes it's hard to know what you don't know, so I don't know how many people have necessarily been, you know, kept from having to take a different path in life because of the Family Center. I know that they're, I mean, worth their weight in gold, they're active with our community courts when it comes to getting people, just all resources you'd never even think about, they've been very pivotal in getting people some things that they really need, so, but I can't quantify it.
I think you could probably find at least one or two examples of prosecutorial discretion that may have, that I may have involved in as well, where we're talking about a specific individual that may or may not wanted to seek help in dealing with a particular charge or not dealing with a particular charge, and then moving them to better circumstances. I don't know if that kind of gets to the point, but having numbers associated with that.
Right, yeah, it's, some people really want help, and they're very receptive to it, and some people do not, but it's timing, too, because, you know, they might not want help the first time around, but the second time around, they might.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I'm not sure if there's any, no other questions, all right? I move that the city council authorize the mayor to sign contract twenty-five dash zero-zero-three dash L E G dash zero-zero-one with Julie Walters and the amount of one-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand, four-hundred dollars to provide the 2025 City of Anacortes prosecutory prosecutor services.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Fantini to approve the contract award as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Walters.
Some of you might have gathered or remembered, Julie is my cousin, so I'm gonna abstain from this vote.
Okay, again, motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Fantini. Mr. Franciak, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Abstain.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, we are on to item six B, this is an interlocal agreement, traffic safety grant, region eleven, target zero, task force, this is a discussion with possible action, and Chief Floyd, you are on.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council members and members of the audience. Just, I quickly tack on to the previous agenda item, the assistance we get from Ms. Walters has been invaluable, and as she alluded to with Officer Pleadwell, one of the requirements to get into that drug recognition expert program is a recommendation from your prosecutor, and because of that working relationship, she was able to give that recommendation, and he is the only drug recognition expert in Skagit County that is not a Washington State trooper, so we are extremely lucky to have that. And to Mr. McDougal's question, if you recall the presentation that I was here last with Mr. Johnson from the Family Center, one of the examples that he gave was a couple that is in their program now that previously accounted for about fifteen cases on Mrs. Walters' caseload, so that program has paid dividends to us and continues to do so. But that is not why I'm here tonight, I'm here tonight for the interlocal agreement with the Washington Traffic Safety Commission, and this allows us to participate in traffic safety emphasis patrols that are organized by the Traffic Safety Commission. Our region includes agencies in Skagit, Island, and Watcom Counties, and for year 2025, agencies in those counties will be dividing up to about ninety-five thousand dollars in traffic safety emphasis patrols. That allows us to participate in the DUI patrols, distracted driving, and a lot of other traffic safety emphasis patrols. One specifically that is here for us locally occurs on Oyster Run Weekend where it's Motorcycle Safety Emphasis Patrol, and so it greatly benefits our patrol efforts by bringing in outside resources to the area and allows us to more efficiently cover the areas that we've identified as needing additional traffic safety, which is also appreciated on a weekend This is a agreement that we've participated in for probably twenty-plus years now, so there shouldn't be anything dramatically different from previous years, just an increase in the amount of funding allocated to the region and an increase of about twenty-eight thousand dollars over the participating agencies.
All right, sounds pretty straightforward, as there are no strings attached with this money or matches, so council, over to you all.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I just have two questions. One, region eleven, it mentions region eleven, is that just Anacortes? I couldn't find, like, or is that?
So, region eleven would be agencies in Watcom, Skagit, and Island Counties.
Okay.
And I believe San Juan would also be included in that, but San Juan never participates, so it's basically those three counties and any agency that within, there is some training requirements we have to meet, which is having all of our officers trained in standard eyed field sobriety tests, which is something that we do anyway because we place a high priority on traffic safety for our patrol officers, so we send them to that training regardless.
Okay, and then my other question, and this is not really necessarily around this, but it mentions it in the agreement, it acknowledges a lot about the mentoring programs for officers, do we have any kind of like mentoring type of program here for our officers that they, like, when the older off, not older, the more experienced officers kind of mentor the new guys coming in, or is that anything we have here?
Yeah, a lot of that is conducted during the field training process, and then with Officer Pleadwell's expertise in detecting impaired drivers, he serves in that role frequently.
Okay, unless there's any other questions, I move that city council authorize the mayor to execute interlocal cooperative agreement two-four dash two-six-four dash A P D dash zero-zero-one between the City of Anacortes and the Washington Traffic Safety Commission.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fantini, a second by Mr. Young to approve the interlocal as presented. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Just as a sidebar, I prefer seasoned, some people start out salt and pepper, and as you age, you become a little smoky paprika, star anise, all right? Thank you.
All right, any additional discussion? Mr. Franciak, vote, please.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, be no further business before the council, I'll adjourn tonight's meeting, thank you very much.